Call this meeting to order the Brookfield Select Board at 6:30, it's May 16th at 6:15 PM. Please stand for the possible. All right, we don't have any announcements and who's gonna do the pleasure of my old job?
Oh, the payroll and the warrant stuff? So.
You wanna do it?
I mean, I can read it off, I haven't, I haven't actually reviewed them yet, but, um, did you?
Yeah, I did, I already signed it.
Okay, so the current assigned warrants are the FY 2423 payroll for one hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. FY 2423 AP warrant for eighty-three thousand, three hundred forty dollars and seventy-nine cents, and there's no withholding warrant. And do we know why there's no withholding warrant?
Yeah, for administrative with the treasurer, it was easy, it's easier and quicker if they just do one per month.
Per month? Oh, okay, so they're putting old payrolls on what, on the senior warrant?
Right.
All right, so I'm gonna see if the accountant is cool with that on.
Yeah, they all seem fine, although, um, so we'll start with the warrant and fire through the warrant. I'm assuming, I'd like to not go through each of them. If we just wanna kinda talk about the ones we have questions or concerns with and then just kinda blanket a group of them.
Okay, especially for the, for the ones that are pretty specific, so, um, let's take a look at this real quick. So, one is annual report, two is, uh, is, uh, due the financial business of the town, three is prior year bills, which I think is a note for here. Four is the water surplus, which is basically the water treatment deal that they need for capital. Ambulance is the standard one every year. Uh, both, both five and six are ones that are just the standard budget process for the ambulance. There was additional carryover from this year that has to be voted in Article four. Does, will anybody have any comments or have any concerns about Articles eight, nine, ten? Let's just take it one through ten, okay, 'cause I think those are pretty much.
I, I have a couple, I have, I'm good with eight, but number nine, I have questions about.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we support Articles one through eight of the current warrant in its standing format in number eight.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
On favor?
Yes.
All right.
Aye.
All right. So, go.
All right, so Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer, borrow some money to purchase breathing air compressor for the fire department or take any action relative thereto. And then expecting it to be an eighty-two thousand dollar motion out of free cash. Mr. Chafee, your question?
Yeah, I, I met with Peter, I looked at the compressor, I haven't seen the service records yet, I would like to see the service records regarding it. And I, after speaking with Peter, he says it's working, fine, but he doesn't know how much longer it's gonna keep working. I asked him about the possibility of mutual aid in building mechanics, does, he didn't feel that it was possible, but I spoke to other fire departments and they said that they would be, that something that that could easily be shared. So, for an eighty-two thousand dollar expenditure, when we have a compressor that's still working, I would like to kick the can down, grow a little farther with that.
So, I have a recommendation about that.
Okay.
If we're not sure it's gonna make the year, I recommend that we put it in the old repair replacement account with eighty-two thousand dollars. Then in the event that it fails, it only requires a vote of the board of selectmen to go ahead and replace that equipment. But if we don't spend it, we don't spend it, and that money is there to earmark for some other equipment replacement throughout the year.
I'm, I'm good with that, and I, and I think if I had known that and spoke to the fire chief about that, I think he would probably be in agreement, and I'd like to, I'd like to be able to speak to him about that again, and I think that's a great idea.
Yes, 'cause that way the money is there if we need it.
Yeah, 'cause we could, we could never speculate how long it's gonna last.
Right, it could, it could last a day, or it could last three years, you know, especially over equipment left out.
It could go tomorrow, right, exactly. Plus, because it's such a big item that I would like, so I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so what I would say is that we would change the wording there, would be to raise appropriate transfer, borrow some of money, uh, to.
So, are we actually gonna change?
We would actually have to change this, right? So, we would have to change the article to represent a sum of money to, um, how, how have we done that before?
And is advisory gonna have to hear what we're saying with this?
Yes. Are they, are they even?
Are you guys in session?
Oh, we had, said at seven, the, the, uh, presentation.
Okay.
We're talking about making a change to one of the articles.
Well, if you, if you, you can call yourself the board.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, is it thirty-seven, I thought it was for six fifteen? When I looked online, I think it posted, I think it's sixteen, yeah, I think they posted it for six fifteen, the, the, the session.
Yeah, but you know what, I think, I think that's right here.
Uh, my town government, they posted it for six fifteen for the working meeting, the seven, the seven o'clock on the postcard is for the formal presentation around the budget.
Yeah, it's six fifteen. It says six fifteen.
Yeah, it's six fifteen, yeah, so they're legal to, to, to form. Yep, yep, and the presentation won't start till seven, this is working out some of the details.
All right, do you wanna reiterate to them what we wanna do?
Well, uh, have you guys, should we be doing anything? All right, so Article nine, Mr. Chafee had spoke with the fire chief regarding the compressor, which is still working, but he's not sure for how much longer. Initially, his proposal was just to take it off because, um, he felt that the worst case scenario, they could fill bottles in other towns.
Well, I wanna clarify, I asked him if that was a possibility, he did not like that, so I, I, I'm not, I wanna make sure we don't vote, we must speak.
No, I, yeah, so, so, so we asked him about that, and chief wasn't a fan, right, especially we don't have any full-time fire folks and, and the logistics of doing that.
And it would happen during a incident, that was his concern, so.
Right. Yeah, so, um, my recommendation was instead of funding explicitly for the compressor, that we put enough money in the fleet repair replacement account so that if it dies six months into the year, the select board has the capability of voting that money, just the select board with a consultation to you all to go pay for the compressor. But then if we don't spend the money, and, and then we have it still there for a following year.
Okay, I'm sorry, Bob's thing, I just, I can tell it was not.
Yeah, we can play telephone, right?
Side language.
I have a question, though, did Bob say, I mean, did, uh, the chief say what the condition is, what the condition is of the air compressor?
He just says that.
Said it's twenty-four years old, and it's working, and it's working fine, but he doesn't, he, he, he's doing his due diligence to make sure that if it were to go, he covered the town.
We're not coming to a middle of the year to say.
Yeah, so he's not gonna say, okay, all right.
Or it's, they're, I think they, they retitled it at one point, so it's the equipment, it's actually the equipment repair replacement account now, I think Lori retitled it. Because I know they did that, and let me, um, set money aside for the purposes of buying the equipment to put together the basement, you know, truck, and bought all the guts for the top side of the vehicle. And it was something else that you did a number of years ago out of that account. No, 'cause you're voting it as an article, but it's, it, once it's in that article account, it's, it's left to the board and the select board. To decide how to spend it, it was specifically structured that way in the budget. Yep, if we don't spend it, it can still sit there without it rolling back over on my cash. Yeah.
All right, while they're waiting, do you wanna go?
All right, yeah, so, did you have, were there any questions on ten? Questions on eleven? Questions on twelve?
No, we're gonna turn on the back end.
Oh, back end?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I, I, I know we've got questions on thirteen, so let's go ahead and, uh, I'll give you a motion for, um, for us to support Articles ten, eleven, and twelve.
Second. Any discussion?
Aye. Okay, let's skip over thirteen for now while they're discussing the other.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and fourteen would be on hold for the same.
Yeah.
Fifteen, um, we've got fifteen, we've got sixteen, we've got seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. The new twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. So, it looks like we're pulling twenty-four. Yeah, I mean, the money's there, it was voted in an article, they just decided to comply with everything that we said we were gonna do from a standpoint of, of the town. So then. Okay, it looks like what was twenty-five would be the new twenty-four.
But we'll just reference it for twenty-five, come on.
We'll reference it for twenty-five for now, with an understanding that renumbering may occur, other renumbering may occur. Twenty-six. Twenty-seven. Twenty-eight. Twenty-nine. Thirty. Okay, so let's vote, um, where are we at? We're gonna go fifteen to twenty-seven. So, Articles fifteen through twenty-seven, I'd make a motion we support them as a board.
Wait a second, then.
Any discussion?
Aye. We're, we're only getting the ones that we don't have any significant concerns over. The only one that we've changed, we skipped over anything else we're gonna have a change for, so that you all participate in the discussion, okay?
So, not nine is the only one that you're.
So far, so far nine, so far nine is the only one we've agreed upon a change. We skipped over, um, we skipped over thirteen and fourteen to revisit once we had everybody's attention. Uh, actually, we're gonna try to just go through everything we don't have a conversation on first, and then go back to the stuff that we do have a conversation on. So, thirteen and fourteen, we skipped over to, for further discussion. And we just, we just voted through twenty-seven to support, and then we had a question on twenty-eight, so we were setting that aside for now. Article twenty-nine, uh, setting up a shade tree revolving fund. Oh, I'm sorry, setting up, um, that was, uh, adopting Mass General law for shade trees, thirty is all of our revolving funds. Thirty-one is, uh, basically authorizing us to, um, look into getting a property for senior senators. Thirty-two. Is, uh, relative to the platform lift.
Not quite, we know roughly, and we know what we have currently is not enough, so this is just putting more in there.
So, we don't know what we're asking for yet?
Well, the, the amount that, the amount that we were gonna ask for was seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and fifteen, yep.
Oh, it's on the next page, sorry.
And that's, that would get, between what's already been voted, and that amount gets us to just about enough for an elevator, especially if we get some matching funds on a grant. So, it puts us at like just a, they had some rough es.
For an elevator?
Some, some romps for it, for an elevator, if we don't go to the basement with the elevator, between what's already voted and that seventy-two K, it's at the very low end of the, we'll put an elevator in that goes first in section four. And then if we got grant money, it would lower the cost of the town, we have the money to purchase something else. Then, uh, thirty-three. And then it looks like we're removing thirty-four through thirty-six. Because we, we, didn't we combine that to single technology upgrade? Yep.
Can I ask, just because I have not had a chance to meet with you guys prior to this, of the last, the eighty thousand for the, well, I'm, how did that get started? What, what precipitated that, that the, being a hundred and twenty-plus years without, how did we?
Because if we're going, if we're gonna reoccupy the second floor, um, we have to modernize the fire alarm, you have nothing in the building. So, we're gonna start using it as a public meeting space the way it was used fifty years ago.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't that long, believe it or not.
Right, it wasn't that long, okay, but you gotta, yeah, is that if we're going to start having large crews in there, we need to bring in indoor compliance with the firearms, and that's what it costs.
I was just wondering if there was insurance demanded, or, and when we, when we do that, will we get a break?
Yeah.
We probably should, um, but we, we probably need to ask.
So, excuse me, uh, that's for upstairs, we're looking for a fire alarm, right? Is that what's going on?
Upstairs and downstairs.
Upstairs and down.
In that state mandate to meet the code because we're going to have access to the second floor?
If we start using it for public gatherings.
State law requires that we do that, it's, it's, it's required, right?
I don't know, I'd have to check, but that was my understanding.
The chief has been requesting.
The chief has been requesting it for years, associated with if we're gonna put the second floor back into use for things like town meeting, that we need to, to get a hardwired fire alarm system installed.
Yeah, just wanna make sure it's a state code thing that's, that's pushing this. You know, I understand safety, you know, years ago.
Oh, oh, I, so safety's not that important, I understand safety, but it only matters if the state tells me I have to be safe.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, I don't agree with that.
The state's not mandating it.
Okay, so, so again, I work in an overregulated industry.
Yes, you're part of the government, I understand that.
You're part of the government too, my friend.
I know, that's why I'm in government to prevent excess.
Okay, so I, I don't think trying to ensure that we have an appropriate fire alarm system if we're stuffing all the people that care about what happens in the town.
I'm just making sure that it's up, you know, the code requires it.
I have no idea.
Well, shouldn't you do that as a select person? Shouldn't you do some research on that? Isn't that part of your job? You haven't done that.
No, 'cause I actually trust the experts that are telling us that we need that.
Just making sure.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. I'm just asking the question, I want some answers.
So, whether it's required by the state or not, I support it. If you wanna check whether it's required by the state, please support it.
I'm not, I'm, no, I'm not totally, I would like to know what our discount to our insurance would be, like, if it, say, I, I don't even know how much we're paying for insurance, but, dollars a year to have something like that, and in, in less than twenty years, it's paid for itself, then I'm totally in support of it. But I'm also, I would also be concerned with the, what it would cost us for the duffable rebuilding in the town hall, and if this saved it, I, there's a lot of reasons that I would vote against.
One life, more than enough? One injury, more than enough?
I wouldn't live in a house without fire alarms, whether it was mandated or not.
I mean, I was gonna say, do you have fire alarms in your house?
Yeah, I do, but I'm not, I'm not sleeping in that hall, I, I guess, I get it.
One of the things that could be to be doing was that, checks it just as code requires, so I think it is important, and the question's coming up now, if I'm gonna come up now, need.
Yeah, and I'm not saying we shouldn't research, what I'm just saying is that we're, we're basing it on, you know, an explicit request based on going back to using the town hall and whole population.
As soon as it comes to gathering, putting, to the general public, that's all the fire shows.
So, I'm mostly in favor, but you, you can all vote me either, and you say that it's.
There isn't outvoting.
So, I'm mostly in favor, but I would like to, and, and I'm at a, I'm deficient because I'm so new and so ready, I haven't had anything, so.
We can, we can bring it up in town.
Right, so I mean, technically, we only need to post it a week prior, so I think we have one more meeting before then, so we're gonna not vote that one tonight.
No, we need to get this.
Yeah, you have to go.
So, if you think it needs to be.
If I, if I have any reservation.
If you both don't wanna support it, that's fine.
No, I'm supporting.
If I have any reservation, I'll bring it up at the town meeting, so, I'd go recommend.
Yeah.
All right, so we're fine through thirty-three. Thirty-seven, any questions regarding the article currently known as thirty-seven?
Yeah, thirty.
Thirty-eight. Thirty-nine. Thought it was actually the accountant, because it was coming out of Narcan money from the town. That's the, or the, coming out of the opioid money for the town, and it's the only thing our town's eligible for. So, in order to spend that down, I thought it was actually the accountant that recommended that the article on. Yeah, so that's what it's coming out of, so. 'Cause, and, and you'll notice it's actually the phrasing of the article wrong, it says from the opioid settlement funds, so. Article thirty-nine.
So, thirty-nine, I certainly had a chance to look at that, and does anyone know more about it than just one or three?
So, so functionally, they're putting, they're replacing the septic system exactly where it is, but to do that, it crosses over the, the town easement for that.
So, is it in the front line of Lower River Street, or is it in the front line of River?
I think it's on the front line of Lower River, if I remember, from the plan that he brought when, the first case.
Yeah, and I thought it was Upper River, where the driveway is, where they park all the cars.
So, upper, upper, if it is.
We went through the whole plans and everything, wasn't.
My concern with the Upper River, if we fix that road and widen it in any way, then I would have some concern with some of that septic system, that being my business, so that. But, for now, I'm gonna just go forward to support it because I should have made the time.
Well, and there's no, and there's no, there's no plan, to my knowledge, for either the town or the state to widen up the river in like the next three or four years.
So, I just wanna make sure we don't get in a situation where we let them put it into the easement, and then we do make any.
What's aren't there right now?
But, but if we do widen the road, and now we cut into that septic system, and we, right, so, that would be my own, but other than that, I think. It's in failure, so if we, we, he's, the reason he did a new plan is 'cause he knows it's in failure, right? So, if we cut the road now, why not give him a brand-new septic, 'cause it's already failing, but if he does put a new septic, and we cut into it, we need to modify it, I think it's on us to that one. So, I know he's really restricted by space, so, I'm mostly in favor, but I just wanna take a look at the plan briefly and give my two cents. But other than that, I know he has very limited options, right? So, I don't wanna, I wouldn't wanna see him thus refuse that, him have to put in the tight tank, yet he has to spend hundreds every month to use his facility. But I, I will immediately check it. Again, mostly supported as far as.
Can you reach out to, um, Bill? Yeah, and, uh, ask him to get, get a copy of the plan back, just. I mean, we should have it from the original date.
When was this original?
Six, eight months ago.
Okay.
Yeah. And a very similar situation with the Lake Road problem.
So, I have less concern there, where the other abutters have septic's in that area already, and they were literally, forced into that situation, but that's the only spot for it.
So, what's the difference between the two, that I don't even have a place on the River Street property that.
I know we're not gonna pave that road down there, but now, basically, the abandoned portion of the road, the septic's favored that, right? So, there's plenty of, when they install the septic system down, on the cell phone, they crowded it towards the abandoned portion of the road versus the one on River Street with setbacks nearly that, to meet the cell phone.
All right, can we?
Yeah, can we move on?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Just 'cause we have other things that we need to.
No, we do. So, we wanna skip, oh, we can't skip. All right, uh, see if the town will vote to transfer some of money, so forty-one, OEB, fifty thousand dollars, forty-two, roof stabilization, sixty thousand dollars. We know when we had the question mark was because we didn't have enough free cash. Let's put that on the notation, but we need to look into, originally, we were gonna take three years to put our share away for what you were estimating for the roof, and I think. We, we tell you we have some, um, so I think that's lower than we originally targeted for the first year, I think we were trying to do seventy-five, but sixty is what we had left, the first time we went through the. A lot of it we put what we had. So, depending on some of the other items, that number could change, but that would be the basement that we would be looking at. Article forty-three is administrative, support of keeping somebody in service on fire. Forty-four, um, is, um, I'm concerned with the council on the eighth. Forty-five, uh, citizen petition, uh, to request that we get a rail station in Hill Street. Forty-six, town moderator's salary doubling to a hundred dollars for meeting, so actually, instead of fifty dollars a year, it's a hundred dollars for meeting. Okay, uh, yeah, because with the size of the family, no, that's only gonna be a discount, so. Forty-seven, updating our bylaw to require, um, have a bunch of requirements around having a parade or an event on Columbus Street. Forty-eight, and, and here's the thing, do we wanna recommend or not any of the citizen petitions, ones that are just, just not comment?
I'd like to make the motion, it didn't work, let the residents know.
Well, they're gonna make the motion, we don't need to pick.
Yeah, let the residents know it's a citizen's petition, and I don't have a pick. Yeah, let the residents know it's a citizen's petition, and I don't have a pick.
Yeah, so honestly, for our purposes, um, our obligation to recommend is ends in point.
Yeah.
So I'd make a motion that we.
And then we have the last one.
Uh, the last one. Okay. And then, article forty-nine, the longevity, um, longevity stipends, and changing the personnel by law to actually put that into the bylaw. So, I'll give you a motion to approve, where did that, where did that start and end?
Somewhere in twenty thirteen or fourteen.
I think we were from, it was twenty-nine through, um. Twenty, twenty-eight, you said, five. So article twenty-eight through, um, about forty-nine.
Exclusions.
Excluding petitions.
Any discussion? Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I made the motion through forty-nine, and I just admitted the.
Okay, alright, perfect.
So thirteen, fourteen.
Yep.
Now, could we do something?
I'll step up, I think I operated the backhoe.
Okay.
So I stopped at the highway department, can you guys hear us?
I can.
Can everyone hear, Jack, can you hear us?
Yeah, yeah, why?
I wanna make sure people can hear.
I think the mic's bad.
So I stopped at the highway department recently, and operated the backhoe, it functions the way it should, it's not a new machine, but if, everything functions the way it should, I strongly recommend to pass over the article, the new backhoe. Or at least, at least I don't support it, as far as the Board of Select.
And I guess the question for us at this point is, do we remove it, if we all are agreed that it doesn't belong on there, and we give your town the opportunity to do it? That's for us to decide, can we give folks an opportunity, decide whether they may do it or not, or do we leave it out there, but don't recommend, since the highway has a word?
I think, I have a tough time with that, only because they're not here to defend it right now.
Right.
But, um, I would vote against it as well, because I also went down there, took a look at it, it's used very minimally.
Yeah, so, um, I'm not wedded to it, because we didn't build it this winter. I mean, my recommendation would be probably to put, for that number that we have of eighty-two thousand, the way I would handle it with that, is with the equipment repair replacement account, without putting the funds in the highway pan, not the whole thing, but take like an extra five thousand dollars on top of the eighty-two, so that it doesn't.
Yeah, but this isn't pre-cash.
Well, listen, I think we're actually in a, if I'm correct, our pre-cash is actually healthier than what we were when we originally voted it.
Right.
Right? So, if there's the room, maybe we sit down and do the math, but I would take this off if there's the room, and put some additional funding, maybe five or ten thousand dollars to repair replacement. In our head, year March four, if something fails on that, and we should get parts, if there's some other significant issue, and you keep them, keep it in service, we're in a position that we're able to do that.
Well, I know in their budget, they have additional money, if they had, if that backhoe failed, they could literally rent one, they have money in their budget that they could go and rent one on the short term, until we could either get another annual town meeting together, or a special town meeting to do something, so there's multiple options, and I don't really support anything aside for it, I think they have enough money in their budget and plot to take care of it, as far as, that's my opinion.
Camera stores, we had a lot of leftover funds.
Yeah, they're. So we haven't started the meeting yet?
Yeah, no, I just got a quick question for the, everybody up there at the board, and so on and so forth, how much money is in chapter ninety right now, for the highway department?
Can we get through what we have to get through for the warrant? This is from the slot court meeting, and then we're going into the other.
Yeah, you can ask that during the, um, public hearing.
Or in the intermission.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not wedded to it, my thought was just, we have a lot of old equipment, so whether it was for that or something else, I think it would be advisable to set something aside for unexpected repairs, but I'd rather, we haven't touched our reserve fund this year, so technically speaking, if we had a big repair on it, we could cover that there, so there's always that as an option.
Can we carry some of that money over?
No.
The little bit that that machine gets used, I firmly believe that we could hire a backhoe for whatever project needed to be done, by summoning it out, or repair it pretty inexpensively.
Yeah, I think the only problem I have is when you rent it like that, you wind up paying a huge amount for drop-off and pickup.
When I.
Relative to the amount of time that you have to use it, so.
When I, when I say rent it, I mean just hire a man, or a person with a machine, per day.
Oh, got it, okay, I see what you're gonna say.
Then it's relatively bogus.
At the last, um, Select Board meeting, you may ask Lindsay to prepare a sort of, or talk to one of the vendors to find out, uh, what we've been getting now, and how we're gonna last, what prepared situation, and I didn't hear.
We don't have a resolution on that, uh, you don't have any resolution?
No. Nothing, we got nothing back.
That would've been the next step for me, to see how much is we should allocate. Sorry, please.
No, it's a good question, thank you.
So any discussion?
I'm okay with pulling it.
Do you want to pull it all together?
I, I would be able to pull it all together as well. I, I wouldn't mind hearing from Kirk Keating briefly on it, because.
Yeah, I kind of would like to.
Before we pull the case to vote on it, I, I would like to hear what Kirk has to say.
Kirk, did you wanna weigh in on that?
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
I, I'd ask that you'd be allowed to speak before we take the vote on whether we take it off of the article.
Are you aware of the backhoe?
Yeah, the things I've heard.
Yeah.
Heard they, uh, were doing some welding on it, caught it on fire, and so on and so forth, because the people down here didn't quite know what they were doing outside.
I don't, I wasn't paying attention.
But the backhoe is twenty, a little over twenty years old right now.
It's got five thousand hours.
Hours on it is nothing.
Right.
Five thousand hours, that's barely broken.
So, you wouldn't buy a new one, then?
Not right at the moment, I'd, uh, look at it, and like Bruce said, take and see what needs to be repaired, or whatever. Keep using it how it is. That's what I would go.
I asked Donald Herbert, who ran that thing since it was new, with you, if he would buy a new one, or to fix it, in a second, he said fix it.
To fix it, what may be wrong with it, I don't think the transmission's got any problems with it, I don't think the motor's got anything, the front end rear end.
Couple pins that are egg-shaped in the, in the wiring harness, didn't get burnt, but got, but the torch welded it, and they did repair the wires, so.
There's a, if something has to be lime-bored, re-bushing, and new pins and stuff, that's cheap.
Yeah, it's not to that point.
Right, that's cheap money to have it done. Now, I'd rather spend five to ten thousand dollars on it, and fix back, after how it is.
But it's not to that point where it's even easy. It functions as it, as it should, there's a little more slack.
Right.
The tightest thing we do with it is dig a grave down at the, but there's no urgency to rush, it's time, because the backhoe I started with in business thirty years ago was a hundred times worse, right? So, I may lose.
So, I'll make the motion to remove articles thirteen and fourteen.
Seven.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Twenty-eight, not feeling?
Yeah, the other one that you'd want to discuss was twenty-eight.
I don't know why we would do a one point five percent, uh, I would like to see it, what the state allows us to do, at three percent. I heard talk that the reason it was low was to try to track, attract more marijuana facilities in town, and like, but realistically, I can't see whole marijuana facilities as far as retail.
Well, we only have two retail.
Yeah, I don't think it was for more business, I think it was for more sales.
Okay, but, I, I'm of the belief we should charge what we're allowed to, with the three percent, and that's my, that's only my opinion.
Oh, I don't really care, because it's gonna go to town floor, and town floor can do what they want.
So I mean, right now, we're in a position, we don't have any tax, I figured we'd put it on there, my recommendation was that our motion would be at one point five, we could even take that recommendation off and have some more discussion about it.
Or we could let that go, almost as far as the citizens' position, that we don't have an opinion.
Yeah, no, no comment.
I don't have an opinion.
Well, no, because we're sponsoring the article, okay? So we have to have it.
Then it's my, then it's my, I would like to see it three percent.
I'm not wedded to it, I just, I recommended it just because I noticed that everybody's at three percent.
Right.
So everybody's, and, and.
You wanted to do, yeah, that's fine.
Right.
And from a sales perspective, probably gonna, I can't imagine the marijuana sales in Brookfield is gonna be so significant, and that's gonna be such a, impactful number, but.
From talking to Laurie with the other guy, really, about.
I don't, I don't know anything about marijuana, so I'm.
Well, you're familiar with it.
So then, so then if we're gonna, so then if we're gonna get the traffic from it, if we're gonna get the potential problems from it, then I firmly believe.
Not wedded, so I just wanted to make sure it got on there, so we got something.
Sure.
So just, yeah, just take off the recommend, just say that we recommend it, and then we'll do the motion at three percent, so. So, um, the motion to approve it, taking out the verbiage associated with one hundred five percent.
Seven.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right, how can we wrap it up with these?
What's that?
You need to figure it.
Well, do we wanna just go ahead and have a couple of repairs?
And then go back to this? Okay. Okay. Yeah, I just want to make you. Alright, so, we don't have to do anything, we're already. So, thank you everyone for coming for tonight's budget presentation, um.
Oh, we never, we never did it then?
I'm just trying to keep track of over here.
Sorry.
Oh, well, no, we, we voted it, we, we voted it to change it from eighty-two thousand.
You want to go there, and I'll get this going.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Alright.
So, we, we voted again.
And so, Tom Regan's so graciously gonna go through the budget, um, he had worked a lot with advisory through it throughout the years, so we just thought it would be easier to have him continue with, uh, presentation, because he probably has better answers than any of us do. So, Tom, the floor's yours.
I'm gonna need a minute.
Okay. Alright, I'm gonna have a little private screen to work with here, but this. Is this thing on? Sounds like it, okay.
The mic's not working.
Oh, yeah. So, Tom, do you want me to send it out, in the meantime, the actual, not the, not the, um.
The budgets.
Yeah, yeah.
So they're also.
It's alive.
Yeah.
Alright, everyone, thank you for coming, is it coming through clearly? Clearly, huh? Excellent, alright, um, we're gonna get started, um, I see some faces here that I don't see all the time, so for, I'm gonna do a little bit for those of us who aren't town government junkies, um, oh, I got strong. So, the way the budget setting works is, the town has three, has a three-legged stool for revenue, we have local receipts, we have state aid, and we have the tax levy, and effect, and then with that, we fund the operating budget. And so what happens is, the local receipts and the state aids are known going in, and so effectively, once we set our budget, the levy makes up everything that local receipts and state aid don't cover. So, if we add, so, from any certain level of the budget, if we add fifty thousand dollars to the budget, then we add, then we need to levy another fifty thousand dollars, that means another fifty thousand dollars coming into the town through the tax bills. Conversely, we drop the budget by fifty thousand dollars, that's fifty thousand dollars less going in there. So, I know a lot of people can focus on their tax rate, but fundamentally, the driver of the tax bill is the operating budget. And then the second thing that affects your tax bill is how much your property is worth compared to the rest of the town. The tax rate is the dependent variable, it's set so that the town collects enough money to be able to fully fund its budget after the state aid and local receipts are done. So, uh, this, this is a diagram of where our budget is now, so those numbers are accurate, we have a little over a million dollars in local receipts, we have three million dollars in state aid, though the state giveth, the state taketh away. Of our three million dollars of state aid, five hundred thousand dollars is, um, stuff that does not touch the, the town, can't apply to the operating budget. It goes directly to school, the school choice money, or, uh, library grants are the two ones that come to mind. So effectively, that's a net two, two point five million dollar contribution to the operating budget. And then after that, there's our levy, and right now, the levy is coming in at, I can't read this, just under seven million. I'm sorry, that is our maximum levy capacity, I'm not gonna get into how to decide the maximum levy capacity, um, for this discussion, that is our maximum levy. Our operating budget is ten point four eighty-two million, which gives us about sixty thousand dollars a headroom in the levy capacity. So, that's where we are now. And, we will eventually walk through all the budget, but I'm gonna, I wanna tell a story and set, sort of, give everyone some context here, so, this is our budget, broken up by group. What we've always done is, in the budget, we have the general government group, we have the public safety group, the school group, and all sorts of, all the departments and such that belong to that group, go in there. And so this is showing how much each group has been over the last three years, so you can see the school, and, you can see the school is, by a large margin, the longest number here. And then we have debt and a. the school is by a large margin the longest number here. And then we have debt assessments, and that's mostly assessments, and on down. And so, I'm not going to dwell on these numbers too much. If you have a question about it, let me know. But, we've got, I want to give people some feel for how much each group contributes to the budget. And then this is another way of looking at it. This is each group as a percentage of the budget. I'm sorry. This is absolute amounts. These are percentages. So, you've got the school at 55 percent of the budget. So, this just shows you, gives you a better idea of what percentage it is. And then the graph on the right shows how much each group grew in fiscal year '24 and '25. And what I want to point out is in fiscal year '25, almost every group grew less than in fiscal year '24. I believe the only exceptions are public safety and water. And public safety, when, is going up because it's a new contract year, and we have to fund the higher contract, and we're just dealing with market rates and the union. And water's going up. I'm not sure why water's going up. I think it's because we took electricity out of the water department's budget in '24.
Yes, I think you're right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we have a $500,000 increase in the budget. This graph shows which group is getting what part of that increase. And so, you can see again, the school is a big part of the increase. I don't believe anyone from the school committee is here. I have talked to the school committee about this. Some of the increase is due to the contractually obligated raises and step increases and cost of living raises. But, my recollection is a big chunk of this increase is they've had an increase in special education placements that they have not been, that they cannot serve those students in Brookfield Elementary, so they have to go to other schools. I believe most of these are going to other schools within district, but if they're going to program in Brookfield, then we have to transfer money to Brookfield for them to educate our students, the, our residents, the children of the people that live in town. So, that is the big driver of the increase in school. It's not that they have a, that the teachers got a big payday. It's not that Dr. Hostman got a big payday. It's not that they are getting around to putting a new roof on the building. It is state mandated special education. And then you look around and you can see every, you can see how much everything else is in there. And so, and the reason I want, the reason I want to show this is it's a big increase in, the budget is increasing by a significant amount this year. And so, if we want, it's like, if we're going to try and deal with it by reducing our, by reducing public works, it's like you could level fund public works completely, and you wouldn't put a big dent in the increase that it's going up. So, I just want people to understand what's driving these increases. And here's my favorite chart. This shows, this shows the breakdown. The inner ring is by group, and then the outer ring breaks it down by department. So, you can see the schools broken up by elementary and regional school, and then that little sliver at the end is transportation, which isn't much. And that's the biggest chunk. After that is debt and assessments, most of which is assessments. For those not familiar, assessments is health insurance, Worcester County retirement for our employees, and general insurance. I think we got one or two other things in there, but those are the, those are the three big ones in assessments. And then we've got public safety. Say about two-thirds of public safety is police. After that, it's fire. Everything else after that's tiny. You guys can read this, and I have handouts of all this for afterwards. Yes, Ms. Coughlin?
And this is just because it's late breaking news that came through yesterday. Did you get the $32,000 reduction?
I did.
Okay.
I was, I really wish Brad had shared that with me last night before I made these, so instead, he shared it with me this morning after, when I said, oh, let me show you what I did.
We got it at four o'clock, I think.
Let me show you what I did, Brad. He's there. You missed the $32,000 that the school took out of their budget. It's like, and then I sent it to, who'd I send it to? And actually, the handouts may, there, there may be one wrong number in there for the school. I think I missed updating it in the handout, and Deb Boyd pointed it out to me when I, after reviewing the copy of this I sent to her, and she pointed out, and so I corrected it in the online.
Got it. Thank you.
But thank you, yes. And then here in the table, we can see the, the actual numbers for each group. Are there any questions on the big picture? All right. So, what I'm going to do next is I want to go through and just discuss, go through each group one by one, where I'm going to show department totals. I'm not planning to show the individual lines, like for the accountant. I'm not going to show outsourced accountant expense. I'm not going to show accountant expenditure, like, I'm not going to show treasurer wages, treasurer as such. At this level, we're just going to say, here's what the treasurer's office is getting. If there are any questions, either from the numbers up here, or from, you have the detailed numbers in the handouts in front of you, everything that will be on the floor is in that handout you have, and we can talk to that. I just don't want to put that many numbers up on the screen. I put people asleep enough as it is. I don't need the extra numbers to make it easier. And so, this is the one that I just, there are too many lines to make this very readable, but this is general government, and I was just wanted to, and the yellow highlights are the ones I wanted to call attention to. And here, I want to call attention because general government is going down ever so slightly this year compared to last year. But are there any questions on any of the departments in general government? Yes, Jeff?
I think it might be helpful, Tom, if you could explain the drop in the treasurer number, because that was a key discussion point that we had, you know, those several months.
Um, yes. I, I, I will, if, if the board would like to speak, if the select board would like to speak, I, no, 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 I don't need to speak now, but if there's, after I speak, if there's anything you'd like to say, or if you want to raise your hand and say, no, 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 that's not right, please go ahead, because I don't want to, I don't want to incorrectly speak for you. But, since I was in the discussion, I do feel that I can answer that question, is that the board, the select board reduced the treasurer department budget on the expectation that we would explore a part-time treasurer, that, our, so our research indicates that, the research at the time indicated that other towns were able to work with a part-time treasurer, and that was something that we would want to try and do also. But other than that, the select board was, I'm sorry, the general government was, didn't have a whole lot of changes in it. And then, I did put over he, in the, in the right-hand side, how much it's, how much it's increasing, both in absolute dollars and as a year-over-year percentage. And then finally, on the far right, it's just how much of the increase of the fiscal year '25 increase it represents. And I think on this one, it's very small.
Yeah. Just, just one other point. The advisory committee recommended that we reduce the reserve fund, which we control from 35 to 30, only because we felt since we level funded, but we recommended that legal expenses be level funded, we, we felt that we would need a little bit more cushion possibly, depending on what happens in the town the next year. So, that will be one difference you can see between when you look at the detailed differences between the select board and the advisory board. In general, there's not that many differences, any different, any difference on wage increases and a couple of other things, but not, not too much. In effect, we're, we're in agreement for the most part with the select board's recommendations.
Yeah. I would say, I, Jeff, one of the main differences systemic between what the select board recommended and what advisory recommended was that the select board recommended a COLA of 4 percent, and the advisory committee recommended a COLA for the town employees of 3.2 percent. And other than that, I think the general expectation was we would be aligned. I think I missed, somehow, I missed updating your technology number. I, I think you guys did vote to adjust with us at the May 2 meeting, and I think I just missed that update. So, and, and that will be reflected in the final. I'm going to talk to Sarah and make sure that those errors get scrubbed out.
That's fine. The technology was just because the technology items were pulled out into warrant articles, and that's, that's reflected, the difference, and we didn't, that wasn't updated.
Yeah. No, I.
I don't think there's any other major differences, but I think the other, other thing that townspeople, hopefully, they will, they will recognize is that when we started the budget process, and we started December, January, at that point, we were over the levy limit. So, we had to really analyze what the select board and the advisory committee and go back and talk to all the various departments, so that we were gradually able to bring things down, and then the revenue numbers went up slightly. And I'd say we're not rolling the dice, but there is a little bit of a possibility of things going one way or the other. But it, it's been a very difficult six or eight months. I mean, I've been on the advisory committee, I think, for seven years, and this is the first one where we started out above the levy limit and had to bring it way down. So, any, any questions? That's sort of the strategy that we, that we took. We're trying to look at things very, very, precisely whatever, every, every dollar counts. It is, and normally, we wouldn't want to reduce the reserve fund, but we did, and other things happened. So, that's just sort of the general overall strategic approach. I mean, Tom, I mean, you put everything together here very nicely. This is the first time we've had, we've explained with nice PowerPoint, figures, numbers, everything else. This has been a goal of the advisory committee for five years at least, to put it in this situation and have people attend prior to the town meeting, where the town meeting, everyone, it's just, you know, so much going on. It's very difficult. But here, at least, we can sort of break down a little bit if you want to.
Thank you, Jeff. So, after town, after general government, it's public safety, fire and police. Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I've got a few questions on general government.
Oh, sure. Please, I'll go back.
Yeah. I was just going over all this, and I wanted to go over a few things with the advisory committee on some of their recommendations, on some of the.
So, some of, some of our numbers are wrong, so we can go over the updated.
So, Mike.
Do you have some updated numbers to share with me?
Yeah, I do. If you're talking about this packet, yeah, with the advisory, yeah.
Would you like to do that after Tom's presentation? We can have this discussion?
Sure. That's up to you.
Well, what specifically do you want to cover?
Yeah, do you want?
Well, I've got a couple. Of course, all of you know, last year, there was a couple people that on the floor got some raises. It was unexpected to some. I know many of you were unhappy with results. It was the library director and myself. So, what I'm looking at here is there's some discrepancies. What I see is the library director, who got a big raise last year, like me, got like a 3 percent raise. And I didn't, and that's fine, but I just want some, I want an explanation.
I believe she's contract.
Is she on a contract?
I believe. So, I believe it's in her contract that she gets.
Yeah, libraries should be.
Yeah.
That used to be. I didn't know that.
I believe the library trustees signed a contract with the library director, and that it was, I mean, subject to funding by the town at town meeting.
When did that contract happen?
I don't know.
I believe the contract was signed ahead of last year's annual town meeting.
Thank you.
Correct. That is my recollection.
So, the 3 percent increase was in the contract prior to the town meeting?
Yeah. So, it states COLA in her contract.
Oh.
I believe, I believe. But I know that there is a contract, so that is why she got an increase.
In, in that particular situation, the same discussion was had as with your situation, but since that was contractual obligation.
Contractual obligation?
Yes.
Well, I'm glad we had this discussion.
All right. Any other questions on general government? All right. Public safety, police and fire are the big ones. Police and fire are the big ones, and police is going up. Actually, police is going up because we, in fiscal year '24, we level funded them, since fiscal year '24 was the first year of their new contract, and that new contract is still pending. And so, the decision of the select board at the time was that we needed to put money in the contract in order, in the budget in order to fund the contract that we expect to be, that we were expecting to be completed sometime either late in fiscal year '24 or early in fiscal year '25. I know that the select board recently had a meeting about that. It looks like that's moving forward again. And so, and I, I'm not going to ask you guys to talk to the, and so, I'm not going to ask you guys to talk about that negotiation. I'm just saying, that's why there's a big increase in police, is we're expecting the contract to be signed. We are expecting that when the contract's signed, we are going to have to start paying them at their fiscal, at the, whatever the contract specifies. I'm going to, for discussion purposes, we'll say, let's say that they, the contract's signed on June 30th, at the end of fiscal year. Then that means that they will get paid their contractual fiscal year '25 rate, starting in fiscal year '25. We, the town will also owe them back pay for fiscal year '24. The budget can support this because, and I discussed this with the, with the accountant, is that the wages account can be deficit spent. The town will, the town is expecting to have enough free cash to fund the float, and then at the end of the year, money can be transferred. Either we can have, if we need to, we can have a special town meeting to adjust the budget, or we can do in, at the end of year transfers in order to fund, in order to cover the back wages from fiscal year '24. It is going to have to be paid. The police will earn that money based on their contract. But our, the thought was, we could not leave that account level funded again for a second year. It would leave the account underfunded. Yes, Rich?
What happens if we had a police officer leave in that timeframe that do the back pay? Are they still entitled to that pay retroactive even though they don't work?
I, I don't know, but I would expect so, since they worked at that time, and the, I, I would expect so.
Okay.
But it would, we would, we would only owe them the difference between what we paid them at their fiscal year '23 rate and what the contract specified they should have received in fiscal year '24.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, we're just waiting for the, we're waiting for the police contract shoe to drop.
Can you schedule on that, Tom?
I would defer to the, I would defer to the select board members on that. I believe they recently had a meeting on that, and, but I don't know if they have anything they can say publicly.
We do not have a timeline.
No.
All right. Any other questions on publics? Sorry. Any other questions on public safety? All right. Schools? I've already talked about this. We can see the, we can see the increases in the elementary school. The regional school actually went down this year. And I believe that was primarily due to Brookfield having a smaller proportion of students in the regional schools compared to the other towns. I know there've been other years our enrollment status steady and our assessment went up. This year, I don't know where our enrollment went, but our assessment went down. Yes, sir?
Hey, on the school, has anybody ever really looked into it to see what kind of money they have left over toward the end of their year? You want to ask them?
Their excess and deficit account?
Yeah. If we give them $4 million, what do they have left out of that $4 million at the end of the year?
My understanding is that money in the operating budget sweeps out and goes to free cash at the end of the year.
Not for the school system.
Not, 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 not to, not to our free cash.
Oh, really?
The school funds.
Okay, that's what I learned.
The school funds roll to the E and D account.
Okay.
So, if they're, if they're, if we underfund them, then they can pull on those funds that are swept into the E and D account.
I knew, I knew they had, I knew they had retained school choice money. I did not realize that they had another source of retained funds.
Is that?
That's something.
This is something I've been asking for years, and nobody can get the answer for it?
School committee.
They, they beat around the bush so much, they won't give it to you.
Well, Deb, Deb Boyd will be at the public meeting on June 6th, so.
All right.
I specifically, we all specifically asked her to come to explain. I specifically, we all specifically asked her to come to explain.
Because I know there's been a fair amount of money in the elementary school and quite a bit in the high school.
Yep. You heard, you might also know one of our school committee members.
Oh, yeah, I do.
Can't get her to tell you the answer, huh? Uh, Dawn?
I don't, I don't see any reference to the school choice money, do they report that as well?
Um, the school choice money goes directly to the school. They, and my understanding is that it is, they, they have discretion using it. This year, they are using some school choice money for capital projects, and they are also using some, some school choice money to offset their operating costs and decrease the amount that they are requesting of the town. So, if they, as an example, if they had put $150,000 of school choice money to their operating expenses, or assuming they put in, assuming they had put $150,000 towards their operating expenses and asked for this much. Had they not asked for that much money, then that number would go up by 150,000 and it would go up to about 4 million instead of 3.843. So, they, they do, can use the school choice to reduce what they ask of the town.
So, is that number reported anywhere as how much they have in the school choice?
I do not know, I'm, I'm sure it can be found and it's, Jeff?
Jeff seems to be. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but Deb Boyd has that packet that we received, we looked at, did not have that number, but it did when we asked Deb Boyd specifically. She said that the amount of money that they were putting in, they increased their school choice money in the operating budget was 150,000 two years ago, 150,000 last year, 200,000 this year because they recognized the increase. They may not have been up like nine or 10%, if they had put that extra 50 in, that she said that was as much as they could put in, whatever they had. So, I think she has the number, we didn't see it, but I'm sure she might be able to tell you on the floor. But I know they're making a concerted effort, I mean, they, this is the first time in probably 10 years that they were a little bit hesitant to present the budget to us because they knew that we were, where we were at. And so, there was a lot of negotiation as far as what was, was possible. And at the end, we had that $32,000 decrease, which was about in line with what we thought we might have to ask for them at some point, so I think it was a win-win situation, they became in good faith and negotiated, you know, what their budget was, they knew it was hot, but it's not, as Tom said, there's not much to be done with the special education situation.
Marty?
Tom, it's worth mentioning that the school also has an annual public budget meeting where, you know, they can, you know, tell everybody all the details and that go.
Oh, I know, I went.
Yeah.
It's, yes.
More people ought to go.
Yeah, and, and for the, just for clarity, the school board reviews a detailed budget that has a lot of line items, but by law, only a single, the total comes to annual town meeting. If the town votes to fund the school at a lower level than they requested, the town can do that. But then it is up to the school to decide what cuts to make to conform to those cuts, to conform to that reduced funding. So, the town floor cannot cut specific programs in the school. They can, the town, the floor can only reduce the funding and then the school, the administration through, and through the elected school board, would then make the decision as to how to conform to that reduced budget. But I think the question about how much retained earnings the school has is fair, and I may, I may reach out to Deb Boyd and I also know the, I also know the finance director there. She has two sons who do drama club with my oldest daughter. Any other question on school? All right, public works? Highway's gone up a little, we, we have a new highway superintendent and the highway superintendent has a water, I'm gonna get it wrong, but they have a water operator's license, and so, they can assist the water department with matters. And so, we thought that was a helpful thing and we think that Pete was the best candidate available to us. And so, we're, we're happy, I was happy that we were able to bring him on board. Any questions here? Feel free to look at the details, I'm, I'm not putting the details up on the screen, but if you got a question about a detailed line, this is the place to ask about it. All right, health and sanitation, nothing terribly exciting is happening here. Slight increases. Although I do wonder why council on aging and veterans are under, in the health and sanitation section, rather than maybe culture and recreation?
Cause they go to the doctors a lot.
That is a good answer, Mike, they go to the doctors a lot.
Because we're trying to keep this community healthy by taking care of those potentially underserved groups.
Oh, yeah, a community, a community health angle by keeping, keeping those populations healthy through the programs aimed at them. That's fair, I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah, it's nothing pickleball can't take care of. Oh, yes, we're gonna have one at the Congo church.
Culture and recreation? Anything there? All right. Debt and assessments, assessments are going up, they always go up, they go up every year. And health insurance, health insurance and Worcester County retirement, they are relentless. Marty, yes?
Has anybody tried to work out the relationship between the retirement fund and COLA increases? To say, you know, if you had a 3% COLA, what percent increase does that mean for the retirement fund?
That goes into the actual calculation.
That, that goes into that whole OPEB calculation, so, and, and fundamentally, and this is where it gets kind of odd, right? So, we're putting away money for OPEB because we're supposed to fully fund the liability, even though we currently fully fund our, functionally fully fund our retirement liability out of our operational budget. So, but have we, have we looked at total cost of COLA raises and what it does to people's retirement? No, because the COLA raises are not based off of the, the near-term or long-term cost of the town. It's about ensuring that we are market competitive for quality people to provide services to the town. So, I mean, we can argue over whether we should level fund for the next 10 years, but by year three, I don't know that we'd have anybody keeping the lights on, so.
Yeah, and, and Marty, I would also say, my brother's an actuary and I would say, the answer's very complicated because it depends, the answer would could change if an older town employee retired and was replaced by a younger one. And so, since, since it's an actuarial-driven calculation, you have to have details of the population that you're calculating the effect on, or the, that's subject to the effect. So, I don't, I'm sure the actuaries could do it. I don't know how easily they could do it and I don't know if they would do it if you, even if we asked nicely. All right, and then water. I'm not sure why we have water here and not in public works, but it's always been there and I didn't think it was my place to move it. Maybe because water, water brings in its own revenue and it's almost self-funding?
Not, yes or no?
I, I know, it's not enterprise fund, cause, so it's on the budget, and so, their revenue comes in as local receipts and then their expenditures are here, but they're, but they're on the budget. And so, and I always felt that even, even if they're on the budget, then the public works might be a better section for them rather than dangling at the end.
I think it's because other municipalities have other utilities and typically those utilities are all budgeted together if they're not private enterprise. So, there's, there's communities that have water, sewer and electric that are all, come under their, their.
EVW.
Oh, so this would be like, this is, the water's part of the municipal utility section, they're just the only group, they're only the resident of that section.
We're the only, that's the only one that we have. So, all of these categories are typically aligned on like the gas fee groups that the state buckets those accounts to. So, and, and that's so that you can do community to community comparisons when you're looking at the DLS site. So, this is split out because those, those type of services are split out that way on the state site. Why they are bucketed that way is, is something I haven't dug into.
But we are conforming to the way it's done at the state level to allow, to facilitate comparisons across towns. That is a good enough answer for me, I like the idea of having our numbers comparable to other towns so we can understand if we're doing well or if we're not. And if we're not doing well, we work to do better, if we're doing well, we say, great job, everyone, keep it up.
And it's not so much well or not well, it's a, what does the community choose to spend its money on?
All right, and so, and so that, that is, are there any questions on the operating budget? Cause after, cause I was gonna switch next to review the, the warrant articles that have money attached to them.
I got one quick question.
All right, I have a really long answer.
Can somebody answer what the highway department has underneath their chapter 90, right now?
No, but I'm sure it could be found out.
I'm curious.
I'll find out. You mean for fiscal year '24 or for 25?
Yeah, well, chapter 90 money is not fiscal year specific.
Right.
So, it, it, the money, if the money's available at the end of the year, it rolls over to the next year. So, it's a question of how much do we have now or how much did we have a certain point in time in the past?
And as, as time goes on with chapter 90, last time I knew, they only could roll it for three years, then the state takes it back.
Okay.
So, I'm just curious what they have in the account they have.
I don't remember the exact number, I know Lori shared it with us at one of the meetings that we had leading up to the budget. I wanna say there was only, like residual from other years, not counting the 163 or so that we're getting for this year coming. I think there was only like 60 or 70 left. Oh.
Yeah, but that's, that's the expenditure, so that's only showing this current year.
Yeah, that only, that's, that's not gonna.
Yeah, but, no, but that's only showing for the current year. What her, I believe is referring to is there's probably stuff from years prior.
It could be, yes.
Right.
Well, no, it's saying, it's saying that the fund balance is, is.
Well, I think if you wanna know what the actual answer is, you're gonna have to call and ask the OT then, find out what they have.
Lori, Lori had a number on it.
Yeah, I think the accountant would know how much we have.
Lori had a number on it.
Well, she won't have the actual number, I can tell you that, because they don't send it to the, to the treasurer or anything like that.
Right, but I think, I think highway's been sending them what they send to the state.
No. The state, the state allocates that amount of money for, for all municipalities across the state.
Right.
All right? Last time I knew, ours was just over 200 and something thousand dollars a year.
Well, we're not getting nearly that, we didn't get nearly that the last two years. We got like 169 and 163 the last two years.
Then something is not going on correctly because usually it doesn't reduce.
Yeah.
The state.
Yeah.
Isn't doing it.
Yeah, so we, but we have not gotten over 200 in a number of years.
Yeah, we should be getting a little bit more.
Yeah, I probably have that backwards, I think it was 163 last year and like 169.
I have notes from an April 27th, 22nd, prior to committee meeting, just my notes say chapter 90, 167,000. Which sounds like similar what you got.
Yeah, it was somewhere in there is what, what we were getting this year.
And that had to be checked by someone else on the budget.
Yeah.
Well, and actually, I have an email relative to what was this year's, I just don't know what the balance is left over from the prior year. But I don't remember what was.
Do you wanna email Lori, so all of us don't email Lori?
Yeah. I'm gonna see if I have something from her, because I thought she sent us something at some point.
All right, are there any more questions on the operating budget?
Well, Tom, what's the magic number then? If that's the budget that goes through to town.
I don't, um, let's see, which kind of, which kind of magic are we talking about here?
1598,000. Tax rate.
Yeah, I took the first slide.
Ooh, the tax rate, that is a, the, I am not touching, I am not, Tim, I'm not touching that number with a 10-foot pole, I'm gonna tell you why.
We can know it exactly.
But what is the total expenditure?
I think there, yeah, there's, there's gonna be the money levied against the town only. And then we know at least a snapshot of the assessed value in town, so we can actually, big picture, understand the range of it. I can't imagine a change much from where it is, because the budget hasn't been changed.
You can unplug, you need to.
That's all.
What was last year's total budget versus this year's?
But we have a lot in the assessment from you.
The total budget last year was 10.
Last year's budget, 10, 10, oh 37, 10.037 million and we are 10.482. So, that's an increase of about $450,000 roughly.
So.
Now, that is, now, the reason, the issue, the thing is, I'm not, as I said before, tax, the tax rate is the most dependent variable in the equation. The number that we control in town meeting is the budget. And then the budget drives the levy. Now, the levy is used to decide, the levy says, how much money do we need to raise from all the property taxes? Now, now the assessor comes in and says, well, what's the property in town worth? If, I'm gonna use around numbers, if we had a $10 million budget and we had $100 million worth of property in town, then we would need to raise 10 cents for every dollar of property. That's not how the numbers really work, but I'm going with simple numbers. And then, and, and, and then the question becomes, how much you pay depends on, well, how much, how much of your house takes up that $100 million worth of property? If you have a $50 million state in town, I'll tell you what, you're paying half the property taxes in town.
Tom, that's not the point, the point is we're all paying the same 1598,000 this year. So, no matter what we, and so, my taxes are gonna be different than someone else's and I understand that piece.
Right.
But in terms of that math of the, it just, again, just understanding the range.
I, I would see this.
Well, tell me, people need to understand, if they wanna do something like some of the things that happened in the last year's town meeting, things off the floor that caused the budget to go a little squirrely, they need to know the facts, right? You want X, well, just I'm saying, your tax rate's gonna go from 1598 to 1602 or whatever the number.
I just remember 100 grand equals about a dollar in the tax rate.
See, that's, that's kind of the.
But, but again, again, hold on, I would, I would caution against looking at the tax rate because every year, the assessed value changes. And so, if your assessed value goes up, but the budget doesn't change, then your tax rate will go down, but your tax bill will remain the same. I would say this, if the, if the levy goes up 5%, all else equal, tax bills will go up about 5%. Probably a little less because New World's gonna take a little bit of the edge off of that. But all else equal, if we, if we spend 5% more and local receipts stay the same and state aid stays the same, then the levy's gonna have to go up 5%. And that means it's good, that's, and that levy means it's gonna show up in your tax bills. And that's the important part, it's not whether it's $12.13 per thousand or $14.79 per thousand, it's whether you're writing a check for 1,000, 1,500 or $2,000 every quarter to the tax collector. And so, I'm not gonna get into the mug's game of predicting tax rates.
We don't have to.
But I will tell, but I will, but I will tell you that if the budget goes up 5%, then look for your tax bill to go up about 5%. I think that's, I think that's fair, and if someone feels differently, then let's discuss it. But I, I think that's, that's the way I have learned to look at it.
No, Tom, and I'm okay with that, right? That's, that's the range, that's, that's the number people.
But Tim, Tim, was, so, but was that, did that tell you what you wanted spoken? To help people understand the impact of an increase in the budget on their pocketbook? Cause I think that's where you're getting at.
If they could do the relative simple math of 5% times, 105% times what I paid last year, you would think they could, but some people aren't that quick with the math, right? So, all I'm saying, if there's a simpler way to do it, which I think what you're saying is very simple, but whether we need to make it simpler or not, I guess it's just something to think through.
Hmm?
I don't have an answer for it, I'm just saying.
And then, and then just one more thing is, is that I, that I didn't know until a couple years ago, is that the tax rate is set in December, so we approve the budget in June and then. So we approve the budget in June, and then an estimated tax rate is sent, and we pay our property taxes in July and October based on those estimated tax rates. Then we do our recap, the assessor does that with the accountant, treasurer, and the tax collector, and then the permanent tax rate is set, and then the tax, and that's why the tax bills in January and April have a different amount than in September and October, because September and October, I'm sorry, Ju-, July and October are based on an estimated amount of tax rate. And then the recap's done, and then we collect, the last two bills collect the remainder of the money we need to meet our levy requirement. As I know the select board is always talking to the assessor about the tax rate in November, about whether we want a separate business tax rate, because that's when the assessor's doing the recap. No more questions?
Yep, I got one.
Oh.
When you started your original presentation, am I correct in you saying that we're at $45,000 under the levy limit with the projected budget?
Correct. Let me go back to the number.
62,000.
Is that with a budget of 10.482 million, we were projecting about $62,000 of levy headroom. Though I will, levy headroom is a proxy for some things, and I would say, I would focus more on the change in the operating budget and more specifically in the levy to understand the impact on your wallet and not the change in the levy headroom. They may correlate, but I think the levy is the better and more accurate measurement.
It's not, just to be clear, the 6192 for the max levy you have, that had, it changed from a couple of months ago. Some of the early calculations, I thought it was going to be close to a 72, and now it's 69. Well, I'm just a number, I'm okay with it, but I just remember, Jeff, our earlier conversation about the levy was, I think, in the 7, I was looking for my notes, but I couldn't find it, 72 or 3, but again, if this is the right number, this is the right number.
I'm not sure where Kelly pulled her information from, but when Lori went through it, the numbers, the revenue side went up.
Okay.
Yes, this maximum levy number is based on numbers that Lori gave me. It's like I found a, I found a minor error in there and we corrected it, and I'm expecting that this is something that she's solid with.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I mean, it was a two-step situation between Kelly and Lori, but Lori's numbers, I believe, were accurate.
Yeah. I have faith in Lori's numbers.
Absolutely.
Not always, maybe, I can't say she's always perfect, but usually is.
Yep.
Any other questions on the operating budget? All right, warrant articles. So the operating budget is funded through taxes, through the operating money. With the warrant articles, we have other funding options. So we have free cash. We can fund a warrant article through raisin appropriate, which means it affects the tax, affects your tax bills. We can fund a warrant article through free cash. What happens is at the, at the end of fiscal year '23, the accountant closed the books, there were some accounts with extra money, there were few accounts that needed a little bit more money. When all the accounts that needed extra money had money put into them, we still had some money left over and effectively comes out as free cash. So this year '23 ended and we have certified free cash of $544,480. $490, excuse me. My screen is at just the right angle where I glasses, I need different glasses to read it. We can also fund through debt, or we can transfer money from other accounts. And so what I've done is I have split the warrant articles up, and I'm going to go over them by funding source. So we're, I'm going to review all the free cash funded articles and then the transfer articles. And there was a debt one on there, but I'm, is the backhoe still on the warrant or did you guys take that off?
We took it off.
Took it off? All right, then I, it's in my presentation, but I will not talk to it if that's, if that's not going to be brought up to the floor. So, and we have to keep a running track of our free cash because if we have 544,000 and change, we can't allocate $600,000 of free cash. It doesn't exist. We have to stay within our means. And so these are, these are all in order that they will appear in the warrant. The number is based on the working numbers that we have. The final number in the warrant book may be different, but I have to put it there so that the advisory and the select board members would know which one I'm talking about so they can tell me which one I made a mistake on. All right, and then, does anyone need me to walk us through them or do we just want to, do you want me to give you a minute and if there are any questions, you can ask about them? I like that one better. Me talk, I talk less.
That's, that's...
Sarah, don't nod your head so much, please. I'm sorry, Herb, go ahead.
Those are the warrants and stuff that you're saying that's on there?
The, these are, yes, these are all warrant articles. They, they don't have all the verbiage that's going to go in there. I just tried to capture what, who's requesting, who's sponsoring it, and what we're doing. And the thought was, if you need more information, that's what we're here for.
Yeah. What's the, why are we buying gravel for private roads?
The intention is that the gravel for private roads is, if that is needed, the, the gravel can only be used when a resident petitions the town and the select board authorizes it. This is something that we started last year. I don't believe anyone has, did anything with it last year, and so, and maybe the other member of the select board can remind me. I think the intention was that if a road became difficult to be passed, that it was, there was some interest in the town in making it, in providing some material to help them, help them repair. Beth?
So, and I don't remember who pointed it out to us. A couple of years back, it was pointed out that our usual and customary behavior of voting $1 to allow the plowing of public roads really didn't accomplish what the intent was. So the intent was to enable us to do whatever minimum maintenance is required in order for them to be EMS accessible, and in order to do that legally and to use any materials at all on those roads, if, if the, if the, all of the abuders requested assistance in doing that minimum maintenance, that we had to vote actual materials associated with supporting those citizen requests. And since the town meeting authorized us to spend those materials, that gives us the right to use those materials in the interest of public safety.
Yeah, and the, and the procedure was that the abuders on the road, I believe they all had to request, and then they had to petition the select board, and then the select board had to make a determination that this was in the public interest to allow those materials to be used. And so this, it's not, it's not like we're leaving the bin of gravel, "Hey, come and get it if you need to fix your road."
So I have a private road at my house. You guys are going to come over and take care of it for me?
What, the one down the hill below the trailer?
Yeah.
Uh, no, because there's, there's no public interest in repairing it.
Next?
So there are designated private roads in town which are, I believe there's, I think the number is nine, that are, fall, fall into the criteria of a public road, meaning that there has to be more than, I believe, three residents on it, and it has to be able to be turned around. It can't be one way in, one way out.
Mm-hmm.
And, and you mentioned that none of that had been used last year. Ryan was hesitant to do any work on any of the private roads.
Yeah, I believe the expectation was that as part of the petition, the select board would request the abuders to, to agree to some kind of waiver, yeah.
There's a whole state requirement process for that to occur, and they have to...
And the private road used to do that in October, sign that waiver in October.
Mm-hmm. And I mean, I'll be honest, Herb, when we reviewed this, when I was on the board and we talked about this, I, this was one of the things I said, "Do we really need to do it?" And the, and the point was, we've done it one year, it's spring, the work may be getting done this spring, especially now that we have a new highway super, and so if it doesn't get used another year, I'll probably be on town floor voting against it.
Yeah, usually there's enough material left there on the edge of the roads and stuff. All that has to be done is brought back into the road, regraded, and compacted.
And if, and if the highway super can do that without materials, then that's, then that's okay.
They've done it for years, so they shouldn't have to add materials.
I'm a, I'm a computer guy, not a highway guy. Rich?
Well, I would say, Herb, I've watched you put asphalt grinnings down on some private ways in town, particularly over where Ken Cleveland live, on one of the lanes down off Allen Road. So I'm a firm believer that someone that lives on a private road is paying the same tax rate that I'm paying on a public way, and as long as it's not just one or two houses on a, like we used to plow a couple private ways that was one house, well, that came to an end quite some time ago. However, some of these private ways have multiple homes on them, and I, I'm a firm believer that we need to do something for them, particularly down on Forest Ave, right after the condos, there's quite a few homes there. That road is deplorable. If the ambulance had to go down there, they could, they could break the leaf spring going down there, that's how bad it is, so.
I, I agree with you 100% on that.
And they're paying the same tax rate that you or I pay on a public way. So I believe if we have a process, and it's not a lot of money, $3,000, those residents are paying the same rate the rest of us are. So I, I think it's something that's well deserved. We don't plow them like we plow the public ways. We're only giving them $3,000 throughout the whole community if they ask for it and they have their neighbors ask for it collectively. So I, I think it should stay, and I would make an argument to keep it. And I hope, I, I know some of the residents have been asking, and because of a shortage on the highway department, it never got done, but Forest Avenue is deplorable right now. And that's all I have to say. Oak Ave?
Oak Ave.
Yeah.
Lakeside, Chestnut, Chestnut, I think is the worst.
Chestnut is, Chestnut is what I'm referring to, is Forest. It used to be Forest and now it's Chestnut.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Chestnut's the worst right now.
Yeah, I agree. And that's, it used to be Forest and now it's...
And that was done two years ago.
Pioppy did it.
Pioppy coming in and did it.
And, and it's already gone where it's deplorable.
Yeah.
So...
Road needs to be graded better than what it has been and compacted every year. They can do it two or three times a year. We own a grader, if you need a vibatory roll, rent one for the week and do it.
All right, any other questions? Marty?
Tom, could you explain the road reconstruction, number 15? Why, where are the Chapter 90 monies being used, that they can't be used for that?
I believe this is intended in addition to the Chapter 90 money rather than, it's like, because we have roads that need a lot of help, and so therefore we are putting some free cash into it to supplement the Chapter 90 money. Herb, you have a...
Maybe I can answer that question a little bit better for him on that.
Oh, please do.
Road reconstruction. The road reconstruction's out there for the highway department, if they need coal patch, hot talk, if they need to fix pipe or whatever, that comes out of the road reconstruction. Chapter 90 money will not pay for a ton of coal patch or a ton of hot talk. Chapter 90 won't pay for that. That's what road reconstruction's for.
So Chapter 90 money is not usable for that, for coal patch?
There's very, there's very explicit things that you can use Chapter 94.
Okay.
And if it doesn't meet the very specific criteria from the state, a lot of the, the just patchwork does not meet the criteria to use Chapter 90.
Thank you. It's just, with Herb's answer, I, I thought some people might take it as, "It's not enough money to do that," and I want to make it clear, no, it's not that it's not enough money, it's that it is not allowed to be used for that purpose.
Yeah.
And it's a legal issue, not a...
Yeah, the work doesn't qualify for Chapter 90.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you, Herb. All right. And we've got more free cash articles?
Number 33, is that a one-time $80,000 or is that an annual? And if it is, could you explain that, please?
The town hall fire alarm is a, that is intended to be the installation of a fire alarm system, and therefore I would consider it to be a one-time expense. I expect that with an alarm system, there will be an ongoing operational expense to have it, to have someone answer the call when it goes off, just like the burglar alarm in the town hall, because when those go off, it's like they, they would, they would come to me until about a week ago. So one time is the answer, I think is the answer.
Thank you.
Yeah, Marty?
Article 18, which building is $25,000 going to be spent on? Is it just Fordman Library or does an Austin 18 count?
Um, I would, I, I remember you asked me this question. I remember my answer was, I, from my read, I believe it was the library, but if someone has a copy of...
I believe it was the annex, because it was with painting it or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, she just sent, she just sent numbers over a little bit ago. It's, it's roughly 20K to paint the annex, it's $3,000 for downspout-related work on both buildings, and another $2,000 for minor indoor repairs in the north building. Right. That's right.
Okay. Is the article written in such a way that that is, that those expenditures are within the text of the article and the stated intent?
Um...
Because my recollection was that it was for the library repair and replace, which would imply the library building, and if it's going to be for something else, then we want to make sure the article is written compatible with their intended use.
The article specifically says to the library building repair and maintenance account for maintenance and repairs of both 2 Lincoln Street and 18 Common Street buildings, including pest control remediation, or take any action relative there too.
All right, thank you. Then that's, that to me is clear enough.
Yeah, it's pretty explicit.
All right, and Marty, did that answer your question?
I hate explicit warrant articles. I'm glad that one is.
And then, select board, I heard, I heard you guys talking about $60,000 free cash. Is that a stabilization transfer that I didn't catch on my list?
No, the $60,000 was for the roof, the school roof.
Oh, that's the one I missed.
Yeah.
I went, I went with the last version, okay. All right, so...
So that's why, is that why you've got $66,000?
Yes, that is why I have so much. It's like, okay, so, error on my part on the board, there will be a, I should have caught that now that you mention it. There will be an article in the ATM for transferring $60,000 from free cash to the capital stabilization account. Or is it the roof account?
No, it's a roof account.
To the, to the elementary school roof stabilization account, because that problem's not going away, and so we're going to keep putting money into it until, to be able to fix it. So that will be, that will be in the warrant. Are there any questions on that? None? Okay. Uh, yes, Herb?
Hazards trees, 55,000.
Yes.
What have they done in the past few years for tree removal and what are they spending?
They've done a lot in the last six months, and I think it's almost six thousand.
What are we paying per day?
About 1,800.
1,800?
Yeah, and that's 1,800. They provide all their own equipment, their own crew.
Right.
The highway department can go be doing other stuff while the trees crew is working.
Sorry.
Herb, I didn't say they, no, I'll keep...
I'm sorry. It's a, we go from $800 a day for a tree removal to 1,800 a day for tree removal now.
Well, when was it $800 a day?
That's what I was being charged before, because I was only hiring a guy in a bucket truck. And the highway workers, we, we helped take care of the trees.
I've got to agree with Herb on some of this. The fact that we're paying 1,800 a day and now that we're staffed fully at the highway department, I question why we're not using them again now doing the tree work now that we're fully staffed. So I think that's something we need to look into a little further.
So with that, with that said, I would say, I would, we're, we're pretty far behind in the trees. I'd keep it at 55, and if we can figure out a solution, it might help us get the rest of the trees done.
Get more trees for that money, then we still funded it that way.
You've got 55 here plus you've got another 15,000 on the regular budget for tree removal.
Correct.
Yes, and I will say that the contract for 1,800 a day was a competitive bid process, and I believe, since it was over $50,000, I believe it went through a sealed bid process or with a formal proposal.
Yeah.
And so therefore, it's like, it was the best price we could get. If some, I mean, if someone, if someone... If some, I mean, if someone, if someone was out there willing to do it for less, or say, "I'll do it for 1,200 if you provide a crew," it's like, they weren't interested in us.
That's why you gotta work with the, some of the smaller tree outfits that are, you know, one operator or whatever, and decide the person in the bucket truck to take the trees down. And pay, have the town remove the trees instead of paying them to remove all the wood from the road.
That is something the board can look at. Marty?
Okay, Tom, that's a Lori's Expenditure Report 59. There's still $37,650 to mature the removal account.
Okay. So, there's, there's still about over $35,000?
So, why would we be putting in $37,000? Why would we be putting in $55,000 more? Let's say that goes down to $25,000 by the end of the fiscal year, then we only have to put $30,000 in. I mean, this $55,000 is a ridiculous amount to put into that tree project.
I would say the, we still have a backlog of over 200 trees. If I recall correctly, it's at least 200 dangerous trees that need to be removed. Also, my understanding is the contract with the tree removal service, according to the tree warden, the contract with the tree removal service was signed last summer, and that it was not until late in the fall that we started getting slots. I would say, but I would say this should probably be discussed in more detail with the tree warden who's in charge of it.
And I would think, because that, that bid was only for that $55,000. So, I would think when it comes to next year to that $55,000, it's gonna be a whole new bid.
Yeah. If the contract was structured so that it could only be $55,000, then yeah, then we'd have to...
There was a set limit to that.
Then we'd have to rebid it. The additional money would have to be bid.
Right.
Anything else on the free cash? All right. And then we have transfers. It's kind of a bit of a mishmash between where everything comes from. But I mean, the water department, Don Taft, where does the, what funds the water department capital account? Or the water department surplus account, excuse me?
So, the surplus, there's an account for surplus, and we transfer it to our operating, for operating expenses.
But where does the money, where does that money in the surplus account come from?
So, if we, if we have, you know, so if we take in more than we spend, it goes into the surplus account.
Okay.
That's expenses only, so they don't fund their salaries from that? So, that water surplus that he's talking about is strictly expense account, if I remember correctly.
Salaries come out of there.
Because, Don, your, the water department employee salaries and the water department operating expenses are on the town budget, which to me would imply that the revenues go, are part of local receipts. And so, if they're local receipts, they would not go into the surplus account. So, I'm, so, I'd be curious to know what, where the surplus account is funded from, or what its source of funding is.
Revenues taken in that, above and beyond the expenses.
Okay. So, in other words, if, I'm gonna use around numbers again. If the water department had $100,000 operating budget, and it took in $110,000 of revenue in fiscal year, then $100,000 would go into general revenue, and the $10,000 above and beyond the operating expenses would go to the water department surplus account for the water department's use. Okay. That's, that makes sense. Okay. And so, and then makes sense that you guys can, that you guys are asking to pull some of the money out of the surplus in order to fund capital expenditures.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. And so, again, all these transfers are not from any, are not from, are not affecting our tax rate, I think is the fair thing to say. The ambulance expenses and wages, the ambulance gets, the ambulance squad gets paid for going out on calls. They're, all the money they earn goes into a dedicated ambulance receipts account, and then the money is transferred out of that to cover their operating expenses. For 2024, they are concerned they're going to have a shortfall near the end of the year, so they've asked us to put an article in here. And shortly before town meeting, they'll tell us if they're going to need to use that, or if we'll be able to pass it over in town meeting. But again, that's, that will be funded out of ambulance receipts and not out of the town tax money. Fire station repairs, we've identified a number of older warrant article accounts that have served their purposes. And rather than letting them be dissolved and having their money flow into next year's free cash, we said, "Why don't we grab the money now and repurpose that money into a fire station repairs account?" And that way, as the fire, if work needs to be done on the fire station, there's some money that can do that. Cable TV, that's to buy the equipment and software and such to run the cable TV station. I believe we are very close to getting the Brooklyn Community Media TV station back up. Jacob keeps telling me that. The O-32 second floor accessibility improvements. The Select Board voted at the time to take the money that we had allocated for a platform lift and repurpose that, or put that into account instead intended for accessibility improvements. The board is looking into the possibility of putting an elevator in to service the first, second floor. I think the board was finding that the platform lift was not something that was going to be achievable at a reasonable price. And so, rethinking it.
Well, the platform lift was a temporary measure, which was approved by the state as an interim until you've got a, an elevator. So, the platform lift had like seven years' time as an interim.
Oh, after seven years, it would no longer cover us for accessibility purposes?
This took six years to get to where we're at now. So, rather than spending the money on a platform lift, get, go into the elevator.
Yeah, it's, it did not have a, it no longer had a long enough useful life, even if we could get it in. Yeah. And so, yeah, and the elevator makes, if we're gonna do something, an elevator is the appropriate long-term solution. I don't, I don't think that's enough money to put an elevator in. All right. Uh, let's see. Technology upgrades, that's, the town needs a new, we are investigating a new town website, and we, and some computer capital acquisitions. The UPS, I believe the UPS needs new battery, and that isn't cheap. And the current vendor for our town website is giving us, as we say in sales, "go-away pricing", where they're no longer interested in serving the smaller towns. And so, we need to identify a new vendor and migrate the town website over to that new vendor. I believe we have until the end of the calendar year to do that. But, Brad?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, let's see. And then Narcan and... Have we decided an amount for Narcan?
No.
No? Okay. All right. And then roof, and then roof, I found roof stabilization, Beth. No, I, that, Marty, that's an old, that's my bad. It's an old number. And so, I will, I will verbally correct that. The roof, originally, the plan was to transfer some money from one of the other stabilization accounts to roof stabilization, and the board decided to take a different tact. And now, we're gonna be putting, as mentioned earlier, we're gonna be giving $60,000 into, from free cash, into roof stabilization.
Are you saying 40 is what I went up? Or we're putting in 75 and 60?
No. 40, 40, what I'm calling 40 will change. And instead of being 75, a $75,000 transfer, it will be a $60,000 allocation from free cash. There'll be one article for roof stabilization. It will move to the, it would move to the free cash section, Marty, when that happens. And that's it, since we're not doing the backup. Thank you, Marty. I've always been internally motivated.
So, is the advisory committee now gonna join the selectmen in the remainder of their meeting?
I would, I don't know. I'm done talking. I think everyone's done here. And me, I would ask direct that question to the Select Board and advisor.
I want to thank you for coming in to do this.
You're welcome, Rich. Hey, I had fun doing the sunburst chart. That was fun.
Did you say these are available?
Uh, there are handouts over there. But I didn't want you seeing them until I got to put them up on the board and got to talk to them.
Did you get one of these?
Okay, because we have to go through the rest of the... So, do you wanna rapid fire? Just make motions and we... Or actually, the first one we gotta do is the ARPA money allocation. From my understanding, we have to rescind $70,000, because we allocated originally $170,000 for the... All right. So, we allocated $170,000 for town hall upgrades and repairs. And I think we're only using $100,000 for upgrades and repairs. So, we have to rescind $70,000. Does that make sense here?
It does.
So, was the ARPA money able to be used for the elevator?
We could have.
Do you have enough?
We had enough, yeah.
Is there any balance left for ARPA?
So, we're rescinding 70K in order to have it to do the insulation of the police station, because they had, they had moisture, basically degraded all of their insulation. So, and it has to be spent on a certain time period. So, I think one of the reasons why we weren't allocating, I think we have until the end of this year to allocate it.
It has to be incurred by the end of this year.
Right. It has to be incurred by the end of this year. And I think we didn't trust that we would get the elevator on the books in time, unless it was a primary focus, because we had such a, I mean, we allocated money for the, for the platform lift, and we got ghosted by three different contractors and was never able to implement it because of that. And I mean, literally, Al Jones went up to New Hampshire to go find one, and they had gone out of business.
And I think we originally had a million or something like that?
I think it was like 800, 860 K.
And I don't know where it all, a lot of it was gone before I was on the board.
A lot of it went to Central Street.
Right. That's right.
The 300,000 of it went to finish to Central Street.
In Green Street? Or no? There was another, was there a water project that used a bunch of wa, half a million of water?
Yeah, there was.
It was. But that was that article that the, looking for $54,000 for Green Street, which they kept saying was paving. But that contract was, was under budget, so... And, and part of that, I thought, was coming from ARPA money.
Was that not on the warrant?
That was not, that was not on the article.
No, it wasn't. And I don't think it was, why is that missing?
Do we actually owe the $54,000, or do we not? So, a contract was signed for a set amount, with a percentage from a grant and ARPA money. Contract was signed, it's under budget, and yet, they were saying that there's $54,000 for paving. It's an, it's an accounting issue.
And I think Kelly must have done something. I don't know what happened.
So, that maybe with that 70 grand should go back to that account.
Yeah, I think Lori was trying to figure it out.
So, do, again, do we, in your opinion, do we owe the $54,000 to the contractor, or do we not? It's my understanding they're asking... It is owed to the, that is, that is owed to the contractor. The money, that contract was signed to the breakdown of where the money was coming from. And I believe the ARPA money wasn't there. I don't know.
I don't know what happened.
It's, it was under budget, but there was a contract for the project with the money designation there. It hasn't been overrun, it hasn't been added expenses, it's under budget. So, somewhere, the contract administration of the finances needs to be straightened out, because there was an article in the warrant for additional $54,000, or whatever the number was.
Yeah, actually, they took that article out, and the additional $54,000 for paving at Green Street is going in.
I can't hear you about it.
I'm sorry. The additional $54,000 is in the road reconstruction money. And he had the wrong number on the road reconstruction. I just realized he had the wrong number in the...
This should not be a request for extra money. The money was already there.
No, this is an accounting game, I think is all we're doing. I think we had the money. I just think she didn't factor the ARPA right. I forget what she did. Lori has a whole explanation for it.
If you look at the contract, it said what the percentages were.
Yeah.
So, that was the town's percentage of the contract is what the problem is, because most of it was grant money.
Most of it was grant money. That was correct. And the other, I believe, was ARPA money. I, I, look at the contract. It says, you can't, you can't sign the contract without having the funds. The funds were there, and now they're not. That's the way, that's the way I understand it. Because the water department was surprised when, when the article appeared, and it said, "The water department, the highway department supports it," or, you know, it doesn't...
Okay, here we go. So, Dennis, thank you. After reading your emails below, I remember exactly what happened here. And this is coming from Lori. Okay, so after the emails were sent last year regarding allocating the additional funds needed for Green Street out of ARPA, it looks like we may have allocated them. My chart says culvert project on one line and masterworks on another, but regardless, both those allocations were subsequently rescinded by the board. So, this is where we are now. You have no ARPA funds left to allocate this. You have allocated all but $14,000, and I don't even think I have the right amount allocated for the police station, since one note says only for engineering costs of $18,000. The other says for the full project of $82,000. My amount only includes $18,000. You have to fund this from the annual town meeting article, whether it is a standalone pave Green Street article or put funds into roads account, my suggestion. There are no other funds available.
So, so what's, what's this, what's this $70,000 ARPA fund?
I think this is just us cleaning up the ARPA fund, because we actually never officially rescinded the $70,000.
Okay.
From the town hall?
Right.
So, we originally allocated, I think, $170,000 for the town hall work.
Was that insulation? Is that what she was saying? Was that the insulation thing?
No, I think that was, I think that they, originally, they were looking at doing storm windows.
And we also thought the painting was gonna be a lot higher than what it was. I think the painting was originally estimated at like $90,000, and we ended up getting it for like $40,000.
So, is this $70,000 of money still available?
I don't, I don't think it's available. I think we're just cleaning up the minutes.
Okay.
And if you wanna check with Lori.
Yeah, she had...
Do you want me to forward this to you? Do you get it?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you could see...
Yeah, I'll, I'll just email that one.
Yeah.
So, Rich, to answer your question, yes, that money is owed to the contractor.
When is this due, buddy? When the paving happens?
I'm sorry?
When is it due? Are they looking for it now, or...
They haven't paved yet. They haven't done the final paving. They, they haven't paved yet, they haven't done the final paving.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, we'll probably have a meeting next week if you just wanna pass over it, I don't really care.
You know, I, let's, let's pass over it and get the list from, 'cause the last time Lori had this, she actually provided us a breakout of what ARPA funding had been voted to which projects. I don't have that copy with me.
Maybe we can get a full account of it.
Yeah, I prefer to do that when we have a full accounting of what's gone where.
So, I will put for an agenda item...
I think the same thing happened on Central Street with the ARPA?
Yeah, there was a bu, a bunch of confusion over what got voted when on Central Street. So, um, we need to get that on paper.
Sounds like we're down to one kid, don't you? Yeah, you're right, I think it is just one little kid in the corner.
Kid's going to the NBA.
Okay.
That's all we're gonna get on here, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Great.
Alright, advisory committee liaison. Who wants to jump on that?
I guess that's me.
It's you or me.
I'll take it.
You want it?
I don't want it, but I'll do it if you, if you...
Beth, have you, have you ever been on the advisory committee?
I have not.
Beth has, so I would say I have.
If you are, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so...
If you build me out, I owe you.
Yeah, so if you wanna make the motion, I'll second it.
I'll make the motion, Beth is our new advisory committee liaison.
Second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Um, request from agricultural committee for a tractor parade at eleven AM on Saturday, May twenty-fifth.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the tractor parade request.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, request from congregational church for the use of the town hall for rain venue during vacation Bible study, July twenty-second to the twenty-sixth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, request from tip-top steering committee to use the town hall, ten AM to two PM, Saturday, June eighth.
I'll make a motion to allow the tip-top steering committee to use the town hall for Saturday, June eighth.
So, how do we?
Want you to second, and then we'll discuss it. Okay, discussion?
I usually open it for him since I live next door to it.
Perfect.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I don't have anything that weekend that I have to be at, so...
Uh, police officer appointment, Patrick Clement. Um, the chief said he wasn't able to come tonight, nor was in the other, in this Patrick Clement is working, but this is making up for the one down officer they have.
Well, if the chief, chief recommended him, I'll make a motion that we appoint Patrick Clement. Do, do we have a probationary period, or how do we generally?
That's all, you, you, that's all governed by the union, I believe.
So, um, there's something on the contract, but I don't think it's a true probationary period. I think what happens is their first appointment is for one year.
Okay.
And then, after that, it's like a three-year appointment, then a five-year appointment, and then like...
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion that we appoint Patrick Clement for a one-year position on the Brookfield Police Department as a patrolman.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, ZBA alternate member appointment, Joseph LaRiviere Senior.
I'll make a motion that we appoint, oh, let me back up. How, how, what do we typically do for appointments on that? How, are they one, two, or three-year appointments?
Typically, alternates are one year, and though with town meeting so close, I think we wanna specify that the appointment is through, um, the end of FY twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion that we appoint Joseph LaRiviere Senior to the, as a ZBA alternate member to July of fiscal year twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cultural council appointment, Sean Mulligan.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to appoint Sean Mulligan to the council, cultural council. I'm guessing that's a three-year appointment? Or is that?
I think that's probably gonna, would that be the same thing where he goes to the rest of the year? 'Cause then we...
Usually just spread out.
We're gonna do a bunch of appointments all at the end of June.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I gave Karen the heads-up that we're gonna have to start to compile that list, 'cause you don't wanna save that for one night, usually.
No.
Okay. So, how do you want it?
So, I, I think in that case, let's, let's just, for the sake of an offset, let's, let's appoint Sean through the end of next year, even though typically I think it's a longer appointment than that. But that'll offset him from some of the other members.
So, move.
But, so June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five?
Twenty-five, yeah.
And council on aging appointment, Linda Lincoln.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Linda Lincoln to the council on aging for a term of, you wanna go June of twenty-five as well? Or do you wanna do a three-year? How, I, I'm just unfamiliar how you've done those in the past. I thought typically they're spread out, so...
Well, they, they have rotational, so without having in front of us what the other, what the other members, what schedule the others are on, I would go either to twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six.
I'll say till July of twenty twenty-six.
Okay, second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, do we wanna talk about these other two things again, or do we need to? The stipend policy and longevity payments? I think we kinda...
We're gonna need to talk about them soon, but...
I think we, I think we actually pretty, I think we covered the stipend policy one pretty thoroughly yesterday.
What was the resolution on that?
Unless, unless we're, we wanna revisit that.
Did you wanna, did you wanna change it to people getting paid monthly again? Is that what it was?
No, no, I don't, I don't wanna change it to monthly, I, I, but I didn't understand why we went two months beyond when the annual town election was.
I think where we landed was, we wanted to reach out to Lori to find out why people were hearing that the payments were gonna be September instead of July.
Oh, right, yeah.
So, I think all we need is clear, Ron, could you just get clarification from Lori about whether that's gonna get paid in July?
Yeah, I've already got on my, that on my Lori list.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, so I think that was the only leftover from that. And then the long, then we, we got the note about the longevity payment for former town employees, so we, in the fall, we had voted to have somebody who was retiring get their full longevity, even though they retired during the year. So, I think for the classification of employees retiring, I think we need to include them in the longevity payments generally, but I think we do probably wanna specify that for people that...
Are just leaving?
That left voluntarily.
Pro-rated or not at all?
I don't think we do it at all.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
So, so I think there's fundamentally a difference in class between people that retire after, you know, thirty, or something like that.
Yeah, right, but like Don and, but Don and Al.
Particularly out there, you retire after thirty-four years.
Yeah, but like Eric that walked away because he didn't like the fact somebody else wound up getting promoted doesn't need to get it.
Right, I agree.
Or got a better opportunity.
Yeah, you heard that.
So, it's gonna be, if you're retired, you're getting full or prorated?
I would say full.
It's full.
Just so you get the full year. So, even if you retire September first, you're gonna get the full year.
So, at least this year, we may wanna revisit it for future years, but for this year, earlier in the year, we made, we voted to, um, pay the full longevity for somebody who was retiring in September. We have another individual who's retiring in June.
Yeah.
Obviously, that person should get treated the same as the person that left in September.
Sure.
Now, I think it might be worth revisiting.
I agree.
After that, to say, perhaps it makes more sense to prorate it even if they're retiring. Right. But, since we voted one that way, for this year, we need to be consistent and everybody gets treated the same.
Yeah, 'cause what I, oh, wait.
No, go ahead, Ron.
I was gonna say, what I got out of Michelle's, well, legal opinion, if you will, is because the warrant article was so vague, it really made a pol, yeah, it made it a policy decision for the board.
Yep.
So, I would say, yeah, what we do is, I agree, after the fact, you know, maybe in in July, board gets together, says, okay, this is our policy, and we don't have to worry about it.
Well, I could, I think we could touch on it right now. We don't have anyone else coming down the line for retirement that I'm aware of. And I would like to say, from this point on, we'll prorate it. I wasn't a selectman when you guys agreed to pay him for the full year, even though he retired in September. But like you say, we got another one, so I think we should treat it the same, but we have nothing else in the pipeline that I'm aware of that's anyone gonna retire. So, from it, from at, from this point on, I think we should prorate it.
What about, well, no, I guess it wouldn't be, I was thinking like Don, I'm trying to think of who would retire, like Donald Flotter, but she's under that EMS thing.
Right.
So, that's definitely...
I'm not aware of any other public employees that are...
I'd rather not make a knee-jerk reaction at eight-thirty at night after we go through the budget. I'd prefer to go through the full, like, longevity policy and really talk about the full thing rather than just make the decisions.
I agree, 'cause I, I think we also need to...
Is that fair?
Yeah, I, I agree with that, so, but I also think we need to talk about, in that longevity policy, part-time versus full-time.
Yeah. So, and what's interesting, though, is it's gonna, part of it is also gonna depend on how it shakes out with the bylaw change that is called out by the citizens petition that's on the floor, right? So, um, because Article forty-nine that's on the warrant amends the personnel bylaw, adds language relative, and, and it does not differentiate between regular full-time and part-time employees for years of continuous service, right?
Mm-hmm.
And they get the same amount regardless of their status, okay? Which, I think is wrong to begin with, right?
That's what I'm...
Right? If, if, if somebody works like fifty percent of a full-time person, they should get fifty percent of the stipend of a full-time person, right? That's just, that's just what makes sense.
I mean, I think the intent was good.
Now, I agree that the intent, intent was good. Well, you know, the intent was whatever the intent was, right? So, um, but, you know, once it's on, here's the thing, though, once the bylaw's on the books, right? It's basically effective for a year if we wanna make a modification to the bylaw, then we make the modification to the bylaw at that point. So, that's one of the reasons why I don't wanna have a policy discussion right now, because whether or not we even have the authority to make that determination...
It won't be overruled at the town meeting.
Right, it could be overruled at the town meeting. Now, it is, it is silent on, um, proration, like what happens if the person is not employed at the end of the fiscal year, right? So, even the bylaw language that's in there, and I think once that's either on the books or not on the books, then we can see, i, is that modify it? Then, then it becomes a consult issue with KP to say, hey, if it's the bylaw, but the bylaw's silent on prorating for people who are not employed at the end of the year, is it an all, that, has it now become an all-or-nothing thing? Or is it a select board policy decision about what to do about folks that aren't employed?
I think if we amend the article and we had something ready for it...
That's the other option, right?
Would be a better way to do it.
I mean, if we wanna, I mean, it is a citizens petition, but you can amend it on the floor.
We can amend it, that's right. And I, and I think if we talked about, like, part-time, full-time, how it works, prorated, I, I think we should almost have that ready.
Do you want me to, do you want me to bring proposed language to the next meeting?
That would be great.
Right, and, and...
Well, so when do you wanna do, we're meeting next week. I don't know if we're gonna have enough, I mean, we really need to go through the police thing, I think, next week. I don't know if we should add anything else to that.
I, I, I would trust Beth to prepare that, and we don't, no, we, I don't know that we...
What I would do is, I would put some language together and probably throw it at KP with y'all's permission, just to make sure that what I do doesn't get us into some sort of bylaw jail.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, and then they'll be here the night of the town meeting, and we can, we can hone in on it, yeah.
Yeah, and it'll be keeping in the intent, 'cause, right, any, any amendment has to be in keeping with the intent of the original motion.
And I think we...
I think if we foundationally, if, I think if we keep the starting point the same, but add some of the specific language about how it gets handled if somebody's not employed and, and that part-time gets, you know, gets prorated based on their equivalent of a full-time employee, I think that that would be reasonable language to try to incorporate.
And I think it makes for a compelling argument on town floor.
Right.
To be able to explain the proration.
Yeah.
So, someone who may actually be against it because they said, you know, why on earth are we giving part-timers longevity pay?
They might, it might actually sway people to vote for it.
Agreed, yeah.
So, so if you don't want it in place, we might be doing ourselves a disservice by, by bringing it, but if we're gonna have it, I'd rather, I'd rather propose something that makes sense than just leave it to the floor.
Yeah, or the floor, because then it really becomes a mess if we're not ready for it.